For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of September 16th, 2019. Call the order, please.
Hess?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Here.
And Walgore?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one modification to the agenda tonight as a 5K run walk organized by Stacy Papinoff. The logistics of it were on your desk when you walked in. We'll add that as item G if approved.
I move to motion.
Second.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walgore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Any other changes to the agenda? Okay. Approval of the minutes for regular session of September 3rd, 2019. Any changes or issues? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you would like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. This is the only time during tonight's council meeting that citizens will be allowed to Excuse me. The consent agenda this evening, A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $322,418.76, B is the city council appointment of John Brewer to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term which expires on 10/1/22, C is the city council appointment of Casey Carr and Eric Ferguson as alternates to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term which expires on 10/1/22, D is a budget amendment request to transfer $1,000 from the police repairs maintenance account to the IT durable goods account for the purchase of a new mobile data terminal, E is a request from Irving Entertainment to close Water Street from Second Avenue to First Avenue from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM on Saturday, October 26th, 2019 for a downtown artisan pop-up market, F is a resolution acknowledging here on Shore's Little League as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charity gaming license, and G is a 5K run walk organized by Stacy Papinoff. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Susan? Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walgore?
Aye.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Our announcements this evening is an Alpena County Intergovernmental Council meeting being held at 7:00 PM on Thursday, October 3rd, 2019 at the Apex located at 701 Woodward Avenue in Alpena. That is a meeting of intergovernmental, so township supervisors, council, the county board of commissioners, all meet quarterly for a meeting, and does anyone know what the topic is right off?
I think that jail is one of them.
The jail and the airport projects.
Yeah, and I think, no, didn't they have something about the DNR?
And the DNR?
The hunting DNR, because it affected.
That was a discussion.
It's a great meeting if you're interested. Pretty awesome. Okay, so that was our announcement. I have two proclamations this evening, so the first one is Thunder Bay Folk Fest. Whereas the nonprofit Thunder Bay Folk Society was started in 2013 for the purpose of fostering traditional music and arts in northeast Michigan, and whereas this is, this will be the sixth annual Thunder Bay Folk Festival, and whereas successful fundraisers, workshops, contra-dances, and community performances have been held to promote awareness and support of traditional music, traditional arts, and the upcoming Folk Festival at the Alpena Antique Tractor and Steam Engine Show grounds, and whereas this year's festival will be held September 27th through the 29th, 2019. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walgore, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the week of September 23rd through the 29th, 2019 as Thunder Bay Folk Festival Week in Alpena, and urge all citizens to recognize and support the efforts of the Thunder Bay Folk Society. And quite a group of the Thunder Bay Folk Society is here this evening if they'd like to come up. Chris, would you like to be a part?
We were last week.
That's right. He wore his tie today.
That's in your contract, though, one a year.
We just got to make sure that they all move this way.
Those who are previous, let us get my instructions.
Oh! That's good, they do it, eh?
We have to have smaller groups in this one.
We need smaller.
Maybe you should.
Have a chance to get it right here.
All right, first seat.
Duck down shoulders.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, our next one is the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas October 29th, or I'm sorry, whereas October 2019 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a platform for educating women about the importance of early detection of breast cancer through mammography and other methods, and whereas an estimated 231,840 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed in American women during 2019, and about 40,290 women will die from this year from the disease, and whereas detection of breast cancer at an early stage greatly improves the chances of for successful treatment and survival, and whereas the Zonta Club of Alpena remains dedicated to educating and empowering women to take charge of their own breast health and have organized the 10th Annual Zonta Walks for Women 5K Run on October 5th, 2019 at the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walgore, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Alpena, and encourage all area citizens to take part and be aware of this occasion in our community. And Zonta is here with the club. First, we have the second reading of ordinance 19-448 to rezone property located 555 South Fifth Avenue from R2 to Planned Unit Development District. Adam is here.
Absolutely. As we went over this last time, there was just one change that was made to the actual text of the ordinance. One, yeah, one change of the conditions were added. The first four conditions were the ones that were discussed at the last meeting. They have not changed. But after, after talking to staff, we decided that a fifth condition was necessary. It reads that this development must house elderly persons as defined in ordinance number 19-449, which should be approved after this one, if it is, and any change from this status will be considered a major change to the PUD and will require a public hearing before the planning commission and final approval by the Alpena City Council. We thought it was necessary to put that language into the PUD rezone, just to make sure that if any changes did occur, they would have to go through the process and publicly have their opportunity to give their thoughts on it.
Okay.
And Adam did talk with the developers. They had no problem with that being added.
Okay. That would solidify her statements that they had no plans on becoming anything different.
True.
I think that was our biggest concern, I suppose.
Yeah, that was a question that we had talked about earlier. There was something else that we brought up last week, too, because one of the concerns from the citizens was, I believe it was parking, and you were doing some checking on different, different homes and parking and such, and the other thing was values of the homes in the neighborhood when this type of development goes into, into, into that area. Do you have any opinion on that, or?
Correct. Myself and Chief Jett did some checking on different facilities operated by this, by this applicant. So we did contact the city of Rockford, who has a similar senior independent living facility there. City manager indicated that his only concern regarding the development was that most of the time the parking is a sea of asphalt because it's not utilized, and he said they were going to look at changing their parking regulations because of that particular facility. In addition, Joel did have a chance to talk to their police department and just kind of talked about their calls. It did say there's slightly more medical calls than maybe average, but other than that, you know, there was not necessarily a great deal of others, so. And then in regard to the vast property values, I did have a conversation with Alan Berg this morning. He indicated that residential facilities like this in the past have not brought down values of other residential areas. He indicated that the only type of facility that might bring down the value in a neighborhood would be an industrial facility. He says that that has occurred in Alpena previously, but as far as other residential facilities, he'd argue that would be, he has said it has not been an impact in the past.
Just a comment before we vote on that, too, Mr. Mayor, too. One of the things, when I first saw this project, you know, very in favor of it, you know, and then I was approached by several of the citizens who, who were against this, and I think that, first of all, staff, I think you did a great job of addressing all the issues and concerns. It makes me pause, because I think this is a really good idea, and I still do, but it makes me pause when citizens who are immediately affected by it don't, you know, want this particular facility or are objective to it. But to me, it's almost like a replay in football. I mean, there's got to be undisputable evidence that shows that this is a bad idea, and stepping back from the neighborhood and looking at the needs within the city itself, I believe there is a need for this. You know, we've talked about the different living facilities around here, but I can't see anything that would warrant a no vote for myself. I mean, you know, so I've talked to the citizens. I think they had some very grave concerns. I think the one thing that I definitely wanted to add at that is that this changes from an adult facility such as it is, that it has to come before the planning commission and acting before us, so we can alleviate those concerns, so it doesn't turn into something other than what it was originally planned for. So I just thought, you know, I'd asked a couple of different questions, and I just want the council to know exactly where I'm at.
I appreciate, I appreciate the answers to those questions. They're thoughtful questions and great answers, but we do have to be careful that we don't fall into a category, and we learned this a long time ago, on planning commission, not my backyard. You know, it's a good project. These people deserve a decent place to live. I live in the neighborhood. I'm not concerned about my property values. It's a good use of a building that is otherwise empty. I think an empty building is probably more of a detriment to my property values than a building that is utilized by senior citizens. I'm for the project. I'm more than happy to listen to people's concerns, but it is a good project. We're not dropping something horrible in a, in a neighborhood. It is a good project.
Yeah, and the other thing, too, just so council is aware, is, you know, I spent some time down in Saginaw, as you're all aware, with my wife working down there. I spent time in a facility that's similar to this. The parking lot was exactly what the developer had described. It was only, you know, at that time was three-quarters full on a Saturday. I sat there for about 20 minutes. There wasn't much traffic in or out. It was well-developed. It was well landscaped. It looked like a really nice pleasant place to be. I think it, you know, seeing that gave me the whole perspective that I think it's going to be a better addition to that area than, than what they have now, which is an abandoned school, that basically, you know, it's, the grass isn't cut, and I mean, it is a detriment, I think more so than what this facility is going to be, so I think it's going to be a fine project in the end.
I have nothing to add that neither of you said. So would, so would.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 19-448.
As amended.
As amended, sorry.
Second.
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walgore?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next up is the second reading of ordinance 19-449 to authorize the payment of an annual service charge in lieu of taxes for residential units serving elderly low-income persons or families. That is the pilot. Bill, you didn't want to read that ordinance, did you?
I did not, but I will if.
I didn't even let you chime in on the last one, but Adam kind of wrapped it up. If you wanted to go over that again, if you want to summarize it, or?
Well, this is in conjunction with 448, and this is the ordinance that makes that particular facility a pilot. We discussed it last time. I know there were some concerns about what, what it meant, and so condition five was added to 448, but under section 4E, it does define elderly person as 55 years of age or older, or a household which has at least one member who's 55, and all other members are 50 or older. So, you know, that takes care of some concerns, I think, that were expressed that, can they turn around and turn this into something different and still receive the pilot? The rest of it is, you know, different sections, but the section number six, as well as the definition of how we establish that payment, and number 6A1 indicates that effective upon the adoption of the ordinance and subject to the receipt by the city of the notification of exemption or such other similar notification by the sponsor and/or the authority, the annual service charge shall be equal to 10% of actual annual shelter rents collected, yes utilities paid by the sponsor. So that could change, obviously, on a yearly basis, depending upon how full the facility is, and then what the cost of utilities may be in terms of rising or falling during a particular calendar year. And I believe that has to be paid on April 1st of each year is under section number nine.
Last day of April.
Or last day of April, I'm sorry.
By then.
Yes, by the last day of April under section nine. And this, any other ordinances that are in conflict with this would be repealed, but there are no other ordinances that I'm aware of that would be in conflict with this. So I simply need to vote yes or no.
The question I have on that, Bill, is there anything in there that would, you know, for enforcement of non-payment of that?
No, other than just, no.
Is there, is that, can you do that in a pilot program? Is that something that you can write into this particular ordinance?
Would that be the same as non-payment of taxes?
Yeah, I mean, it's still a, you know, the payment in lieu of taxes work as a tax, it's just, it's just not the regular tax, so.
So it falls under the same code?
Well, I guess I would say this. I don't want to, I don't want to say something inaccurate to council. I guess I would not know right off the top of my head whether the enforcement would be the same as the non-payment of any other tax. I don't know that. If that's a concern, then I would suggest that you not vote on it, table it to the next meeting, and.
No, you can't do that. If we do that, this project is dead. So either put language in now, or no. The thing is, if they don't pay it, they've breached this, in which case, I would say they no longer have this, they're now taxable. They don't do that and pay those taxes, it goes up for tax sale after two years, just like any other contract. Because you'd be violating this if you don't pay.
Well, this is contractual in nature, so obviously if they didn't pay, it would be a breach of the contract. Yeah.
As long as there's something, because I'm new to this, and I'm just, that was a question that kind of popped in my head.
We've never had an issue with anybody ever not paying the pilot, to my knowledge, anyways.
I'm comfortable if it's reviewed as a, as a contract, you know, and in violation of the contract of not paying. I'm comfortable moving forward.
Yeah, to me, it would be a breach.
If I could just add, and I brought this up home with Greg after the last meeting, that the recycling charge isn't a tax, it's a surcharge, so that's not included in this. They have to pay that.
And they've been made aware of that, that they will have to, because that is not a tax, it's a fee, a surcharge or a fee, so they will be required to pay $700 a year for 35 units once they're up and operating.
That was my question.
Section eight specifically says that there's a contractual effect to this, that this is a contract between the parties, so a breach of that would, I believe, take away, you know, their pilot.
And my only question was, in that same section, how, how will we know what their annual shelter rents were? I'm assuming that, who's monitoring this to know, and what will they provide to you to say this is how, how many renters we had at such and such from month to month? It'd be like audited records.
Yeah.
That's pretty standard, I suppose. That was my only question, otherwise I don't have any issues.
There is a definition for annual shelter rents as well under 4A.
Well, they have to provide all the supporting.
They'll have the supporting.
So how much they paid in utilities by, you know, cancel bills, what, you know, bills that were paid, things like that, as far as the rent was.
All right, thank you.
And we'll have done over there, and we, you know, we counting how many units were occupied.
I'm not getting an apartment over there, I qualify.
Most of us do.
Not quite.
Right started. Okay, same old school.
I move we approve 19-449.
Second. Go ahead. Cindy, you were. Cindy. Okay, I was Cindy. Noack?
Yes.
Walgore?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. New business tonight, a to the 2019 Special Assessment of Merchant Street bid recommendation. Rich?
On September 10th, 2019, the city received an open bids for the 2019 Special Assessment project of Merchant Street between Miller Street and Lake Street. This project includes a citizen request of special assessment for street improvements, including curb and gutter, widening of the existing asphalt, concrete approaches, sidewalks, and trees. As part of the overall project, stormwater and sewer utilities will also be replaced on this block of Merchant Street. Bid documents were sent to 10 firms and plan rooms and also posted on the City of Alpena's website, with two bids received as follows. MacArthur Construction out of Hillman, $223,038, and Elmer's Crane and Dozer out of Alpena, Funding has been established with $125,000 in the water fund, $85,000 in the sewer fund, and $20,000 in the local street fund for this project. The bid prices are below the engineer's estimate and budget funding levels. Engineering department has reviewed the unit prices for the bids received and has seen no anomalies in those unit prices. It is my recommendation to city engineer that the project be awarded to MacArthur Construction for the as tabulated bid unit prices totaling $223,038. And if approved, the contractor plans on starting this the first week in October and waiting it before November 1st.
Something else that needs to be approved with this is whether we want to do the special assessment rule before construction starts or when it's complete.
And then entails?
The, generating the bills for the special assessment to the taxpayers, the homeowners on Merchant Street.
What's the pros and cons to doing before or after, or is there not?
It's such a small amount that if we waited until after, what was it, like $6,000 we figured?
It wasn't a lot.
Yeah.
You said before it's done, or when it's done? What are the two choices?
Either before construction starts, like now, we would do it, bill them, or else just wait until it's done.
I would wait until it's done.
I mean, what if it snows and it doesn't get done till spring?
Yeah, we're going to make all that money off of that interest.
I would say.
After.
I'm for after. You need that to be part of your motion? You're going to really throw me for a loop?
Do we just do it? Do we have to?
I would just do it.
We do two separate?
Two separate.
It wouldn't hurt, I guess.
Well, let's do the first part of that. I move we award the Merchant Street project to MacArthur Construction in the amount of $223,038.
Second. Walgore?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noack?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And whatever she said, so move. I move, I move we approve the request for special assessment after the construction is completed.
Second. Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
And Walgore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the, what? Sorry. Next up is the 11th Avenue Park Street Intersection Improvements and Bid Recommendation.
On September 10th, 2019, the city received an open bids for the 11th Avenue at Park Street Intersection Improvements. This project includes water, storm sewer, curb and gutter, and concrete pavement replacement at the intersection of 11th Avenue and Park Street. Bid documents were sent to 10 firms and plan rooms and also posted on the city's website, with three bids received as listed below. There was a disparity between JNN's as-rat and as-tabulated. I'm going to read the as-tabulated. Elmer's Crane and Dozer out of Alpena, $152,684.10. MacArthur Construction out of Hillman, $162,379. And JNN Construction out of Gaylord, $199,263.60. Funding of $160,000 has been established in the water and major street funds for this project. The bid prices are below the budget and funding level, and the engineering department has reviewed the unit prices received and has seen no anomalies in those unit prices. It is my recommendation to city engineer that the project be awarded to Elmer's Crane and Dozer for the as-tabulated bid unit prices totaling $152,684.10. And again, this project, if awarded, will be started in October and completed before November 1st.
Fantastic. No questions, sir.
Can we move to a motion? Move to award this project to Elmer's Crane and Dozer for $152,684.10.
Second. Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walgore?
Aye.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, resolution 2019-16, grant approval for the application for neighborhood enterprise zone certificate for 301 First Avenue. Adam Paul?
Certainly, we've done one of these recently, so I'll paraphrase a little bit, but the house that is going to be under construction at 301 First Avenue applied for the NEZ certificate to evade a portion of the new taxes upon completion. The NEZ committee consisted of myself, the builder official, a planning commission member, and historic district study committee member reviewed the application along with it, along with its architectural compatibility of the home, per the approved policy and rating schedule determined, and determined that the new home qualifies for a 12-year NEZ exemption. At this time, staff would request that council approve resolution 2019-16 granting a 12-year NEZ exemption to the property at 301 First Avenue.
Is this the, of the last lot that's available?
Even less, three lots, so at a future date, hopefully, we will be able to get rid of this NEZ.
Just so council knows, I was on this committee. I was a member of this committee.
What did the other, these other lots receive the same enterprise zone?
Correct. All the other houses have received similar enterprise zone. All the other houses have received similar enterprise zone. They had the opportunity, and I believe they all did qualify, I think most for 12 years, if not all.
Okay.
Yeah, all of them were in the district that was created. That's it. The district was that one block where the old high school was.
And that's it.
Okay.
I move we approve resolution 2019-16.
Second. Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walgora?
Hi.
Hoss?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the Thunder Bay River Frank Improvement Grant.
All right. City of Alpena has worked hard to maintain a good relationship with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, or MEDC, as well as many community partners, including the Friends of the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary. I'll probably call them the Friends Group, just because it's easier to say. To that end, the Friends Group has been in development of a long-term plan for the plan surrounding the Great Lakes Maritime Heritage Center, which included various public recreational amenities, including trail improvements, pavilions, a kayak launch, an amphitheater, and sports courts. The plan meets the goals of the comprehensive plan of the city of Alpena, and as it expands our waterfront assets and expands our recreational opportunities available to the public. City has kept MEDC informed on this planning process before the possibility of potential grant funding in the future. Earlier this summer, the MEDC approached the city and suggested that funding was available through the public improvements program for all of the proposed upgrades, and staff was able to quickly put together a proposal. City engineering staff was able to generate the additional information required, and a proposal was submitted to the MEDC on behalf of the Friends Group, the city, and the property owner. The MEDC generated a letter of interest, effectively reserving $3,897,342 for these public improvements, which requires a 10% match, or $433,038, which the Friends Group is working with various community partners to raise. The city has offered to contribute staff time to design some elements of the improvements, as well as a portion of the grant administration process. The number I put on there was actually a little bit off. That was for another project we had been working on. So at this point, the value of staff time is yet to be determined. Now, the property owner has indicated his support for these upgrades, although the exact area of the grant is still being developed. Per the grant terms, the city would have to be granted a permanent easement or over the area of improvement or 50-year lease. A maintenance agreement for these improvements will be recorded with any lease or easement agreement, and will be brought to the city council in upcoming meeting, along with the lease or easement language. At this point, a signed grant application from the mayor is required to proceed with the grant process. The next steps include a public hearing and resolution, a series of environmental hearings, as well as the approval of the lease easement and maintenance agreements for the city council. Other than that, I'd be more than happy to take any questions. I would note, on the site plan, the sports courts shown, that haven't quite been determined, it's still work in progress, and they are not to scale on the site plan that was submitted. And part of the, on the site plan, part of the improvements did include some build improvements. Those are not going to occur because of the lease situation. So if they do that, they will have to do that themselves. It cannot be part of the grant.
So, Adam, the, this is fantastic, by the way. I mean, you guys have been working on this for a long time. I don't want to be a downer on it. I just got a couple of questions.
Sure.
As far as what would be our city's, do we foresee any issues entering into either a lease or a land use agreement with the owner? Or is he completely on board at this point? He, they, she?
At this point, we have an incontact with the owner. They are on board with the project. We have not settled the exact terms of the maintenance agreement at this time, but we will have to have that done and will have to approve by council before the grant can move forward.
Yeah, and also what the actual boundary of the project will be, because that's what will either be the easement or the lease. And then who's going to be responsible for maintaining what? As an example, part of this includes a parking lot, enlarging and improving their parking lot. At least from my perspective, that's not something the city's going to maintain in the future. It is not a public parking lot. It's there exclusively for the, for Noack. So those types of things are what will have to work out, and council will have final say. If there's any part of those, both the easement or lease, or the maintenance agreement that you don't like, you do not have to approve it. You can recommend changes or whichever.
And then in the end, we just work it out?
Right. We'll be sitting down, Rich and Adam, myself, maybe Steve, with Noack and with Jeff Contra, which is the property owner, to work out those details and then bring you back what we think is workable, and it will be ultimately up to you and the MEDC, because they're going to have to approve it as well, everything.
Yeah, at this point, we don't have, I mean, the site plan is not finalized. We'd like your, to approve the grant, the grant application, initial grant application, because that will allow us to start basically working with the contractor, subcontractor, that Noack's been working with, really finalize the design. So that's where we're at right now, just trying to get that finalized. And then we, we come back, we still have to do, we'd have to do a public hearing on this grant and move through the steps, and this is just the first of, many times you'll have to hear.
So you're really asking us to just, to approve a signed grant application from the mayor? That's all you need?
Authorize the mayor to sign the grant application.
Good.
And what is the final date that everything, basically, they want where they can go before the Strategic Fund Board and Land scene for approval?
At this point, our letter of interest expires, I believe, the end of January. We have some environmental steps we have to go through, just a series of public notices, that kind of thing. So that's why we want to move forward now and make sure we can hit that deadline.
So you have enough time to go through the environmental steps before you...
At this point, we do.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Well, I will be allowed to sign the application.
Second. I say...
I made the motion for second.
Okay. I was confused, sorry. All right, Noack?
Yes.
Walgora?
Hi.
Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I move we adjourn to close session with you, city manager.